The meeting for December 6th at 7 o'clock. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I get to do some of my favorite stuff, which is get out from behind the dais here and introduce the town of Parker to some pretty phenomenal people. So first, if I could have Councilmember Hefta and Councilmember Hendricks join me down here. And then if we could have Dr. Doug Wrestler, Pastor Wrestler, and then Darren Kessler. So we got Wrestler and Kessler.
That's right.
So for those who don't know, Doug Wrestler is Parker Evangelical Presbyterian Church here. And then Darren Kessler is from Douglas County Christian Counseling Services. So Councilmember Hefta and Councilmember Hendricks put in a recognition award. And let me just read what they had to say. This is for exceptional service for Parker residents from the Douglas County Christian Counseling Center and the Parker Evangelical Presbyterian Church. Dr. Doug Wrestler and Darren Kessler provide outstanding services to residents of Parker and the greater Denver area residents. The center provides outstanding mental and emotional health services that would otherwise be unaffordable for many residents in Parker. Your exceptional contributions bring great credit upon yourselves, your church members and contributors to the town of Parker. And as we were talking before, you know, who knew in 2020 how important mental health would be and having a real solution to mental health? And you two gentlemen have really done that for Parker. And Laura, I don't know if you want to say anything or Todd?
Well, I just, I'm at the mental health summit was sponsored by the county commissioners. And we got to talking and I learned about the wonderful services that the Presbyterian Church offered and that they even funded out of their own pocket to start these services in conjunction with the Christian Counseling Services. And there's so many religious organizations in our community that contribute so much to people through their congregations. And this is a wonderful service for our community that many people could take advantage of. And it's specifically designed for folks in a lower income status that really need the help. So this is truly wonderful, what Presbyterian Pepsi is doing in conjunction with the Christian Services. Thank you.
So thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much. There's yours and we got a good recert. Thank you so much for what you do for Parker. Get the council to stand behind us.
Oh, we're going down.
I'll help press since she's got all these. Okay, that's, yeah, Anne.
We've got another way to do that. Oh, thank you.
All right, Laura, you can stay down with me. Because I'm about to get inundated with a sea of orange and blue. I need some backup here with me. So if we could have the, and I want to make sure I say this right, the Legend Titans Class 5A Champions, did I say that right? All right, for 2021, come on down here. Line up, a word for coaches.
You got a lot of coaches.
Okay, so I need my softball friend to come join me in the short session. I'm always looking for the one taller in the group, and I only found one in this one.
Let me stand next to that pitcher. Come on over here.
So I want to make sure, all right. So I want to read some statistics off of you guys, you ladies, and our coaches over here. Congrats. Where's, there she is. But I found my good friend, so. All right, so this is Legend High School Softball's third championship in five years. And I think we have one in here that's been in two championships, right? This young lady right here. And the coach has obviously been third. So on October 23rd, the number four seeded Titans won eight to zero over number two ranked Columbine in the Class 5A title game. Congratulations, ladies, that's huge. After knocking out the top seeded Horizon in the semifinals, the Titans entered the championship game having allowed just five runs in three games. In the championship, Junior Cameron Ponich, so where's Cameron? Then Nick Solora. Okay, these are some very impressive stats. Did not allow a hit until the fourth inning, struck out 12 batters while throwing a shutout against Columbine lineup that averaged five runs per game through the first three rounds of the tournament. Very impressive, very impressive. With a one lead going into the fifth inning, the Titans hit three home runs in the span of six at bats and scored five runs in the frame to break the game open. They added two more in the sixth for good measure, and Cameron worked away of a bases-loaded jam in the bottom of the inning to quell a potential late rally by the Rebels. Legend has the only all-female coaching staff in the state tournament, so again, props to you guys. Head coach Krishnan Sher right here. And where is Brooke Jones, who actually is our marketing coordinator here for the town of Parker? Kalen English, okay, so then if we call your name, Kalen English, Alana Burkey, and Cameron all made first team at all-conference awards. Pretty impressive. And the Harrington, McKenna Harrington and Lexi Crave made second team all-conference. Who's that? And then the Legend team finished the season with a 25-4 record. So we are, oh. Oh, and Cam was pitcher of the year. There was this big streak going on in Parker, and it was Ponderosa did this, Shaq did this. But we were so excited to have the one school within the town limits where we don't play favorites here, we love them all. I'm a Legend dad, I'm a Legend dad, so we kind of holla here. But we were so excited when you all agreed to come here. So who wants to accept Cam? Don't accept the award. Now we're going to call off the cameras, let's get the picture, we get the council to stand behind us.
Shift it this way a little bit, a little bit.
Well, you got, we're up high here, there you go. Yeah, and come on, Debbie Tosh.
Somebody's, I think it's your phone.
My kids went to Pondo, but then the grandkids went to Legend.
So Pondo, my brothers and sisters, one brother and two sisters went to Shaq.
All right, ladies, we'll look forward to seeing you right back here next year for the same, for a repeat of this? All right, great job, great job. All right, now on to the regular meeting. Does anyone have any questions? All right, we are going on to our updates from our groups. I'm going to take a point of personal privilege here, and I'm going to call up the Downtown Business Alliance first. Mr. Schnell with your update.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for that privilege. So we've had a pretty interesting end of the year, as end of the years go. A couple notable activities for the DBA right now, which is Downtown Business Alliance of Parker. We have our business improvement survey that's gone out to our members, trying to ascertain what is important to our business owners and what we could do to do better. So we look forward to getting that data back and reducing it with the help of Downtown Colorado, Inc., providing us some consultation there. We just had our elections for our board, and we're going to have a new chair, a new vice chair, a new treasurer, and a new one-at-large board member. So we're really excited. I'm not going to announce the winners right now, that's going to be at our Thursday holiday party. That's at 5:30 PM at Deep Space this Thursday. So looking forward to that. And then I had the opportunity to tour along with some town council members as well as town staff, some west metro downtown areas to get some ideas of how we can improve downtown Parker. And that was amazing, and that was put on by Downtown Colorado, Inc. and the Municipal League, I believe. But we looked at Old Town Arvada, Westminster, Lakewood, and Golden. So that was a great opportunity. Upcoming events, like I already mentioned, on this Thursday, December 9th, at 5:30 is our holiday party. And our next general membership meeting will be the second Wednesday as always, but it'll be January 12th, 9 AM at the library, which is a venue change for us. And DCI, Downtown Colorado, Inc., is going to be presenting at that meeting, so it'd be great if all of y'all could come out and hear what they have to say. They're going to be talking about the results of the survey that I mentioned. So that should be very interesting. Other than that, you know, I am the chair currently for another 20 days or so, and I just want to say thank you to those that I've worked with over the last couple of years, the town council, town staff especially, and the fellow volunteers that I worked with at the DBA. And when I say volunteers, I mean volunteers. These people are business owners, they have their families, and in the hours that they don't have, they give back to downtown Parker. We have had one of the best boards, I think, in the history of boards, as well as some tremendous committee chairs, and I just want to make sure that they are recognized, and I want to say thank you to them. And that's it, that's all we have. Any questions for me?
Questions, council? All right, Josh, do you?
No, you please, I was going to say a big old long spiel, but you're doing it. I just want to say thanks, Chris.
So Chris, we can't let you go without, you know, getting you up here. Okay. It's a, you know, you're not softball, but you know, you're a good pro. So Chris, we just want to say thank you for all your leadership. You know, the last two years has been hard, it's been hard on our main street, and knowing that we had you down there, you know, kind of shepherding our businesses through, and really kind of bringing them all together. And I think, you know, I see all the DBA here tonight, and I think that you would say that, Chris brought about this energy, right? You know, we would never hear an update without the tapping, and I hope your new chair is going to continue with the tapping. Omar? Yeah, sorry, whoever that may be. My accident. But Chris, seriously, on behalf of all of us up here, thank you for your leadership, and thanks for your story. We appreciate it very much. For those of you who don't know, this is Chris's wife, Carmen, son, Landon.
Nice sweaters, ladies. Neapolitan and DeBolt. No, I'm good, I'm good. You gotta get down. That was a former reporter. Yeah, but.
Okay, everyone looking the right ones? Well, this has been special presentation night of the council meeting, so get on with some business here. But first, Parker Chamber of Commerce, Mr. TJ Sullivan. Where am I getting O'Sullivan from? Did you become Irish when, since last we saw you?
I'm Irish and French, so you're forgiven.
Nice. TJ has brought his crew, so if you want to introduce those of you.
That's on my script. I'm ready to go, man.
I'll let you go.
I'm prepared. TJ Sullivan, President and CEO of the Parker Chamber, thank you for having me here tonight. Hello, council members, good to see you. It's my pleasure to introduce our three new board members and Parker residents assuming seats on the Chamber of Commerce Board in January. Brian Short, to my left, is the owner of Block Party. If you haven't downloaded the app, what's wrong with you? He has been a media partner of the chambers for two years. He has been coordinating our lunch bunch events, lives here in Parker, his children attend Legacy Point Elementary, did I get that right? And he brings tremendous sales and marketing skills, which are going to help the chamber grow its membership, so we're really happy to have Brian on board. We have Kathy Carlton is a loan officer with Security National Mortgage Company. She's fairly new to the Parker community, but she is an experienced board leader. She spent many years as a resident and a leader in Eagle County, specifically providing leadership for the Eagle County Fair and Rodeo and Junior Achievement up there. Her fresh eyes and experience at the board level will be a great addition to our board. You all might know the next incoming board member, Sarah Crowe, is the development manager for Parker Arts. She is a former three-year employee of the chamber, and before that taught school for nearly a dozen years. Sarah is a very creative planner of events, as you well know, and this and the knowledge of the town will be a great asset to us. Oh, excuse me. I also want to acknowledge Tierney Aldridge, who will be assuming the role of the Chair of our Board of Directors in January. She's with the Denver Agency, which is an insurance agency company, and she's an advisor with them. So we welcome these people, and you will be seeing hopefully their faces around town in leadership roles for the chambers, so.
Excellent, thank you, guys.
Item number two for me, Parker Days 2022 is in planning and scheduled for June 10th through 12th, 2022. Permitting processes will begin this next week, staff, so don't worry, we're working on it. When I started this job, I was bombarded immediately from every side with feedback on Parker Days. Parker Days is obviously a hugely important tradition to this community, and I have heard lots and lots and lots about what people want and don't want out of the festival. It seems a lot of times the job of a leader of, with such a large event, is to make it bigger, 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 and now our mission seems to be to right-size Parker Days. And so I'm excited that we are taking some moves. Some of these tips, some of these requests came from some of you and from the staff and from downtown business owners. We are going to be reducing the festival to three days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, with nothing starting until 4 PM on Friday to reduce the weekday impact on the businesses downtown. We will not be having a parade in conjunction with the Parker Days Festival in order to alleviate stress on town police and public safety staff. The carnival will be ending each evening at 10:15 instead of midnight to reduce the risk of unruly behavior and so forth. The east end of the festival will end at South Pine Drive, with South Pine Drive remaining fully open, keeping the festival away from the Pace Center, the library, and Town Hall facilities. We will be consolidating all the carnival activities on Carnival Hill, and we are in discussions with the senior center and RTD to utilize those spaces and spending money to entirely fence in the entire carnival area to improve safety. We will be reducing the number of stages. We will have three stages, a main stage, a community stage with community type of entertainment during the days, and then paid entertainment in the evenings, and a demonstration stage where you can learn to, you know, cook up something or make something. So we think that'll be a nice addition. We're going to be working closely with the staff and owners of the tailgate and possibly in order to integrate and promote their musical programming as part of the festival instead of something that competes with the festival, which seemed like a really smart idea to us. We're also planning to coordinate with Studio on Main Street, but those discussions are just starting. And we're going to reduce our marketing reach to limit it to Douglas County. We really want to make this more of a Parker event and less of a regional madhouse that some people say it became over the course of years. So we're going to bring it down a size, and hopefully that'll be a good move for us. And we are tripling our investment in lighting towers and security cameras to provide greater safety. I provided all of you with handouts to give you comparisons from 2019 to 2022. We would welcome any feedback that you have on any of that information. We realize that with a festival of this size, it's impossible to please everybody 100%, but hopefully we're making some, having taken a couple years off due to COVID, I hope we're making some moves that will make this festival more of an asset and less of a stressor on the town and the businesses. Any questions about Parker Days?
Counsel, any questions?
We're going to roll out all the publicity and everything in the next month, but I wanted you to be the first to hear these things from me. Finally, I want to share something a bit more serious. I know you all are very used to me just coming up here and being charming and witty and with my dashing good looks, but the chamber received an email this weekend from an older couple who were visiting Parker to shop at our Costco. They stopped at one of the nearby restaurants for a bite to eat after shopping. This is from their email. "We came in wearing masks and noticed all employees were also wearing masks. We got our food and chose a table socially distanced from all other patrons. Shortly after we started eating, two men, unmasked, came in. They sat directly behind us at a booth at the windows. One man in particular started mocking us. He walked close by our table several times within a short amount of time. He looked over at us and again was mocking us because we had masks near us. After feeling like we were being physically intimidated by this close repeated presence, we put up our masks and began to walk out to sit in another area of the restaurant. He then began to call us names using the F-word before each derogatory name. We then quietly picked up our meals and went outside. Before we got outside, one of the men stood up and got inches from our faces continuing the barrage of expletives. At least four of the employees came over to us and offered to help, all of this because we chose to wear our masks. As seniors in our 70s, we want to take precautions to protect our health. We now feel very reluctant to return to a Douglas County store of any kind, aware that Douglas County in general has been very anti-mask, and many leaders have been very vocal about their anti-mask, anti-vaccine views. To us, Douglas County and Parker might now feel unwelcome and unsafe." Now we're back to TJ. I'm sharing this tonight with you because regardless of what you might feel about masks, and we all know there's a lot of madness around that, our economy benefits greatly from visitors to our stores, our restaurants, and our events. If they feel safer wearing masks, then they should. And they should not fear the disgusting treatment that these two people received from men who were mocking senior citizens and thought that was a good use of their time or political expression. Behavior of this sort has no place in Parker. We are encouraging any resident that might witness this sort of behavior to intervene. We are encouraging businesses in Parker to immediately call police at the first sign of any kind of bullying of this sort. We cannot allow this madness and political posturing around the rightness or wrongness of masks to result in the harassment of people who want to spend their time and their money in Douglas County and specifically in Parker. This is one incident, I hope it's the only one, let's hope it is. I want to believe that Parker is a lot better than what these two visitors had to contend with. I call on our elected officials, business owners, and residents to be unequivocal about a zero tolerance for harassment of this sort. I'm sorry to end on a negative note or a sad note, but this is important, and we want visitors to feel welcomed and like Parker's a good place to be, to live, to shop, and to eat in a restaurant. So thank you for allowing me to share that with you. I felt like you should hear that from a constituent that we heard from.
Great, thanks TJ, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak on items not on the agenda. Comment period is limited to 30 minutes total time, and each individual will be allowed three minutes to speak. I do have two people that have signed up ahead of time to speak. So there's three ways that you can make public comment, is in the room, via Zoom when we get there, and also by email on, by 5 o'clock the day of this meeting. We have received one public comment regarding traffic out on Matsumbaka and Anthology that will be included in the December 6th minutes. So at this time, Keith Move from Colorado Springs? More?
My mistake, I signed up.
Okay, and John McKay?
Same thing.
Same thing, okay, all right. Anybody else in the room wishing to address the council on any item not on the agenda? Please go ahead and come forward. Scene nine. Chris, do we have, if you are on Zoom and can raise your hand or press star six? Scene nine. Uh, Chris, do we have, if you are on Zoom and can raise your hand or press star six? If you have a public comment? Chris, are you seeing anybody?
If you wish to make public comment, please raise your hand in Zoom. There's no one.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number six, reports, items and comments from Mayor and Council. I will start to my left, Councilmember Hefta.
Yes, uh, so in the past couple of weeks, I had the opportunity to go to the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority Board Meeting with Councilmember Josh Rivero. And in addition, we all attended the mayor's tree lighting. Thank you, Mayor. And, and also I had the opportunity to light the menorah at the Hanukkah celebration as well in the same week. And we also had a meeting with the Parker Water Board that went very well. So it was a very busy past couple of weeks. And just to address the, the mask issue, you know, in Parker here, we have such a friendly, generous community that I hope the incident that TJ Sullivan mentioned is just an anomaly. Really, wherever you go in Parker, we have such wonderful generous people. And I'm out and about quite a bit in our community, and I, I think that's just an anomaly. We have such a terrific community here, generous patrons wherever you go. And so hoping that was just an anomaly that happened, and maybe those folks were not from Parker. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
Yeah, it has been a busy couple of weeks. I met with the Board of the Douglas County Housing Authority, and we had our, well, it wasn't the first meeting, but it was my first meeting, uh, for the Greater Parker Foundation. And also, yep, was at the mayor tree lighting, and was so happy to see the great turnout that we had. Everybody was so happy to be out and about, and it was a lot of fun.
Councilmember Diak.
Thank you very much. In addition to the events that Councilmember Hefta identified, um, I had, um, a number of informal, uh, strategic planning, uh, conversations related to transportation, both at the E470 and Dr. Cog levels. And with that, that is my report. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Hendricks.
Uh, same. I attended the holiday lighting at O'Brien Park. It was great to have that event again and see everyone out there. Uh, as mentioned earlier, the dinner with the Parker Water Board, it was great to catch up with them. And on personal note, I attended several shows at the Pace Center that Parker Arts puts together for Christmas, and, uh, uh, that's it.
Great. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I'm not going to reiterate the other events because we were there, but, uh, I want to add a little bit more on the Greater Parker Foundation. Uh, this was the first reorganization meeting of that entity. It has a new Articles of Incorporation and a new set of bylaws, and it has a temporary Oversight Board of Directors right now until May 31st. And so we are going to be looking for community members to serve on that board. So I think that'll probably be going out newsletters and email and whatever else, but if you have an interest, uh, let the town know so we can consider that. We do need to bring in probably, what, six to eight members total on the, the one set of, they've divided this system of who's on the board into three different categories, but from the community or at large, uh, we'd like to see close to eight in the long run. And there are entities in town that we think should be involved, and we'll be sending out invitations on that as well. So by May 31st, we'll be before this council to appoint those new members. The other thing is the, um, Colorado Municipal League had a, what they call their Policy Committee Meeting, which I attended. And that is the pre-legislation review of some of the things that they are going to try to gain consensus on and what they should support and what they shouldn't support. So there are already several things that are prone con, as far as I'm concerned, but, um, that's where I've spent my week in addition to the other events. So thank you.
Councilman Rivero?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, obviously a lot was stated. It is busy time, um, tis the season. Um, one that was left out and probably my favorite was the TA breakfast. Just kidding.
Oh, yeah, I was in too.
But, uh, no, Town Administrator Breakfast, uh, just one of, uh, many ways that we try to show this excellent staff or, uh, or, she tries to show this excellent staff her appreciation for all they do to keep this community wonderful. And, uh, it was a great event. And I got to see a lot of faces, uh, that don't, uh, work in this building, but still are huge members of this community and, and participants in, in this great organization. So was happy to attend that. Um, and then one thing, out of, out of personal note, I, it was, it was busy, and as Councilwoman Hefta, um, mentioned, I chaired, uh, Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority. We are in the process of, of doing something rather unprecedented. Um, we are helping the state write a regulation, which is, is kind of backwards. Usually we have to abide to by regulations, and this is way more in-depth than you, you want to hear, but I just want to say that I'm incredibly proud of the organization. Specifically, we have a Technical Advisory Committee, or TAC, that, uh, does all of that busy work or those, 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 uh, professional work. And the chairman of that is, uh, one Jacob James. And back to our incredible organization, Jacob came from Parker. He is now the Chief, uh, Engineer of the City of Loontry, but he was instrumental in getting this done. And that will be submitted to the state, and we've had the state partner with us, and they are, uh, incredibly excited about this, this way of creating policy, which I think is just, uh, a great partnership. So cheers to Jacob and cheers to, uh, everybody that was involved in this big day.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. And, uh, just to say, you know, thanks to our staff, thanks to, uh, Brooke Spain for the mayor's tree lighting. Nearly 6,000 residents were out there enjoying the night. And I know we had some little, little things with speakers and stuff, but overall I would say that it was a fantastic, fantastic event. Uh, Councilmember Hefta, Congressman Buck and I, we, uh, on Monday, yeah, Monday, we attended the, uh, Shabbat Jewish Center Lighting of the Menorah, and I think we got the third, second or third night out there. It was very, very memorable, probably 100 people gathered out there. Um, really, really moving ceremony that they had. And, um, the rabbi talked about how each of us have a menorah within, within us. So, you know, as we go through this Christmas season, you know, to really remember to be, to be light and, uh, to share a light instead of the darkness. And lastly, um, I had the opportunity to speak to the Leadership Douglas County team on Wednesday. The mayors gathered out there to give our, our little spiel about what we do all day, and they got a Q and A. And one Jacob James was in that class too, and he peppered the town of Parker because he knew all the answers to the questions, so. It was good.
He, he does happen to be a resident of the town, so that's, that's, I'm pretty proud of that, too.
Definitely interested. All right. With that, we will close that and move on to our Consent Agenda item. Consent agendas are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion for consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only, will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have items 7A through 7D for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve items 7A through 7D, please. Second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. We are doing voice votes tonight. So we'll go in the same order each time, so I don't get confused. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Onto item number eight, we have the first of three public hearings for tonight. So our first public hearing is the Town Homes at Pine Drive Sketch and Preliminary Plan. So council, the way we'll do this is I'll open up the public hearing. We will have a staff presentation. Stacy, do you have an applicant here tonight as well with a presentation?
I have an applicant here with no presentation, but would like to address you.
Okay, perfect. Then we will, so we will go with staff's, um, presentation, ask questions of staff. We'll hear from the applicant, ask any questions. We'll open it up for public comment. We will close the public hearing, bring it back for you to opine, debate, consider, and then close it out. So with that, I will open up this public hearing at 7:34 for the Town Homes at Pine Drive Sketch and Preliminary Plan and turn it over to Stacy.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So this evening, the applicant is requesting a sketch and preliminary plan to create lots for 85 townhome units with associated open space landscaping and parks, and to create a 2.399 acre commercial tract for future development. Next slide, please. So the site is located on the east side of Pine Drive, north of Somerset Lane. The subject area is bounded on the east by the Parker Vista neighborhood and to the west by the Town and Country Town Homes. To the south of the site is the vacant town-owned Pine Curve property and existing event center. And to the north is rural residential located within unincorporated Douglas County. Next slide, please. In 2016, the town of Parker and the property owner entered into a possession and use agreement which allowed the dedication and construction of Somerset Lane. The property was annexed into the town on December 3rd, 2018, with a modified multifamily zoning on the eastern portion of the property, and that's highlighted in orange, which provided for single-family attached dwelling units with a density of up to 20 units per acre. The property also included a zoning of modified commercial, which is blue on the map, for the western portion of the property. The modified commercial zoning allows for standard commercial uses. The proposed sketch and preliminary plan would allow for a total of 85 single-family attached or townhome lots on 5.97 acres at a proposed density of 14 units per acre, along with 2.399 acre unbuiltable commercial tract and the required roadway, drainage, parks and open space. The sketch and preliminary plan proposes 1.25 acres of open space and 1.3 acres of park space to meet the minimum requirements of the annexation agreement and the land development ordinance. As required by the modified multifamily zoning for the property, a 65-foot buffer has been provided along the eastern property line. The buffer area is represented by the green box on this map. The buffer area will include landscaping and park amenities for the development, which, which is permitted by zoning. Access will be provided through the newly constructed Somerset Lane. Somerset Lane will be a full movement signalized intersection at Pine Drive. An internal network of private drives will connect Somerset Lane to the residential areas. These internal private drives will conform to the Town of Parker criteria and be owned and maintained by the future HOA or Metro District. The development is required to provide 1.3 acres of park space. The applicant is proposing to meet this requirement by strategically locating parks throughout the residential portion of the sketch and preliminary plan. The development will include several park amenities to satisfy the required park dedication requirements. The park area will consist of both active and passive elements, including a playground, workout stations, shelter with seating, a dog park and a small incline. All additional requirements, including the building setbacks, architecture, landscaping and design, will be reviewed as part of the site plan application. In addition, the proposed height of all buildings will be required to meet the maximum height limitation that is proposed within the zoning. So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. All plating requirements of the modified zoning and land development ordinance have been satisfied. The proposal provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities and design consideration. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. All referral agency comments have been addressed or can be addressed at the time of the final plat, though all public notice requirements have been satisfied. And the Planning Commission heard this application in a public hearing on November 4th, 2021, and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Town Homes at Pine Drive Sketch and Preliminary Plan subject to the four conditions contained in the staff report. The applicant Chuck McHale is present tonight and would like to address council, and will be available to answering questions you may have, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Great. Thanks Stacy, and we'll go to, uh, staff questions on the presentation. Councilmember Hendricks? Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, did, what is the current height limitation there? Is that still 35 feet?
So this is a modified multifamily zoning for the property, and so the maximum height limitation on the property is 45 feet, but it cannot exceed 15 feet above the elevation plane of the road, which is Pikeview Lane, which is located in the subdivision just to the east. Um, and in the zoning, we have it specifically, we had it surveyed, so we have that specific elevation. So no height of any structures on the property can go 15 feet above that elevation plane.
So, but explain the, uh, exception to the 45-feet height total.
So you could go up to 45 feet, as long as you do not exceed 15 feet above that elevation.
But compared to other, we have another maximum limit throughout the town, which is 35 feet. So how is this being allowed? I don't understand.
So this was all evaluated at the time we did the zoning back in 2018. Um, and it was something that was reviewed and evaluated and approved at that time.
So it's going to a prior approval?
Correct.
Okay. Then, um, what was the buffer distance on the north and west? Or north and east?
The required buffer is only on the east property line, adjacent to the single-family, existing single-family residential, and it's 65 feet.
65 feet. And why is there nothing required on the north?
There is, so when you look at the design requirements for multifamily developments, for any development within the town, we do have landscaping requirements that talk about distances. You have property perimeter landscaping. You have, if there's parking lots, you have all of that that relate to it. Um, multifamily residential is also required to dedicate 45% landscaping on the property. So all of that gets added in, and most of the time that is your property perimeter, but that was not something that was negotiated and added into the zoning.
Yes, because the north side also adjoins large acre lots, and so I'm glad they've got the 65 on the east, but I'm not satisfied with what I'm hearing on the north because those are also large acre lots. So, all right, and then I have one more. What is the current density allowed normally under our planning documents?
So for multifamily, it depends on the zoning that you have. Um, multifamily is ranges depending on where you are in the master plan. For this one, it's 20 units per acre. It's a typical multifamily is between 15 and 30.
I know you had that in here. What is it? I know I saw it, but what?
So what's allowed by the zoning is 20 units per acre. They are proposing 14.
Okay. And then the last one, these are owner-occupied?
These will be owner-occupied.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, it's not my last question. It was not on my, my last one on the list was parking. Are these being built with garages?
Yes, so each unit-
Two cars, one car?
So each unit will have a two-car attached garage, um, and to meet our multifamily design standards, you have to have two spaces per unit plus a, one space for every four units of multifamily. So they do have the number of spaces required for each unit and the guest parking required.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Rivero?
Questions recovered.
And Councilmember Diak? Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, can you talk a little bit more about the, the playground and the shelter provided near the playground as well and the dog park?
Yes, so the town adopted park dedication requirements last year, um, which talks about the amount of park space that's required, and then within that park space, you have to have so many amenities. So you have to have a shelter, you have to have seating, you have to have play equipment, all these different stuff to amenitize that park area. So as we reviewed the application, we made sure that every single box was checked within the matrix of parks amenities. And so there's a variety you can choose. Um, and so there is the playground equipment, which is going to be more natural. So you're going to have more like stone and wood-looking things, still made out of plastic, but, um, and they'll have a small incline. There is quite an elevation change as you move to the east. There's a dog park. They'll have a looped path that has workout stations spaced throughout there, so they meet the amenity counts to meet our design requirements.
And there is a shelter picnic area as well?
There is a shelter with seating and a barbecue grill, yes.
And then also, back to the density, um, the normal is 20 units per acre, but tell me, uh, how we got to 14 on that?
So the way, so the way the zoning was written is, is a minimum of five units per acre, maximum of 20 units per acre. And the way we got to 14 was once they took out the required open space for the property, which was 1.25 acres, and then required park space, and then the roadways and the parking, um, as you start to net that out, they could only fit 85 units on the property. Um, to be single-family attached townhomes, you can't go vertical for the zoning. Um, so you take the 85 divided by the 5.98 acres to get 14 units per acre.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Counsel, any other questions for Stacy? All right, thank you, ma'am. At this point, we'll have the applicant come up, Chuck McHale. And sir, if you will state your name and address for the record, and I could start the clock for 30 minutes for you, or you can come in under that.
I will be under, we're, we're, we're good.
I'll take your word.
My name is Chuck McHale. I'm at 3094 Aspen Creek Drive Highlands Ranch. Um, I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and to be at planning previously. Thank the staff, Stacy specifically. They've worked very, very hard. We've had six submittals. We've really, I think, gone through, uh, a number of things concerning parking density, parks, et cetera. And I know that the, uh, design of the project thus far has benefited from all that, uh, input. So basically, we're here with some consultants. If we can answer further questions, we're happy to do so. Just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the, uh, the project and the opportunity to be here before, uh, council.
Excellent. Thank you. If you'll stare right there, we'll just go through the same round. Councilmember Hendricks, any questions? Councilmember Pogue? Councilmember Diak? Barrington? Hefta?
Well, just when you were planning this as well, did you take into account the traffic considerations going in and out of this area? Could you speak to that a little? Could you speak to that a little?
We did. It's a requirement, and so LSC did a traffic study. The use that we're proposing, based on the zoning and what's allowed, I think the traffic survey shows that we're about 241 trips daily less than what would be allowable, and the impact overall, they're suggesting is quite below what was allowed by the zoning.
So it's within acceptable limits?
It... Yes, it's actually under the allowable limits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will put this over for public comment. If anyone in the room has any questions, comments on the project, come up to the mic. Seeing none? If you're on Zoom and have a comment to make, please raise your hand or press star six.
If you'd like to make a public comment in Zoom, please raise your hand. There is no one.
All right. And with that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:46, and we'll bring it back to the council for any comments or debate. Councilmember Hendricks?
No, it looks like a great proposal, and I know this kind of product is in short supply in Parker, so I will commit.
Councilmember Pogue, comments?
No.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In looking at this project and weighing the application against our LDO and the five factors, I do find this meets the zoning district. It also meets the LDO. Most importantly, it meets the master plan in the separation of commercial from true single-family residential. In fact, in the master plan, it states, "Serves as a transition from unique mixed-use downtown core to suburban residential uses to the east," and that we mixed-use neighborhood that will include such uses as higher-density residential. We would like to see, obviously, owner-occupied multifamily in the buffer zone between our true single-family residential and the downtown core, and I believe this answers that use. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Dyak?
Thank you very much. You know, to me, just looking back to our previous council action on this, I'm happy to see that our work with the citizens at that point in time to take into consideration the potential height issues are being fully realized at this point. I am an advocate of for sale multifamily. It is a good missing piece that the Town of Parker is sorely lacking, but other than that, I appreciate the application. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Barrington?
I think that this is definitely a product that we need here in town. There's so many people that are in the single-family market right now because there just aren't any townhomes available. So I'm happy to see that this is coming, and I see that it looks to be consistent with the master plan and fits within all five criteria, so I look forward to this.
Great. Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah. In Parker, many times from constituents, I hear that we're... We have too much growth, we have too much build-out. And I always ask my constituents to look at the other towns and compare Parker with the other towns, and ask themselves why many people want to live in Parker and why we can live in Parker. Parker is supported by the Parker Water Board, and it takes streets and sewer systems and a whole infrastructure to build these homes. And here in Parker, we have that infrastructure. If you go to other surrounding communities, such as Elizabeth or Larkspur, they do not have that supportive infrastructure to support their growth in their town. Growth... When a town stops growing, it dies. And so we want all types of people to come to Parker, to live in Parker, and these townhomes will enable more senior citizens to come, more single people to come, and people that maybe are just starting out, or people that want to downsize, and people that don't want to take care of a lawn or live in a single-family home. So these types of developments, when they're well done, really contribute to the community and enable our community to thrive. Thank you, developers, for working so hard on this with our planning community as well. Thank you with the town. Thank you, Stacy.
Counsel, any further comments? We'll close the debate, and I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve, based on staff findings, with the following conditions contained in the staff report. Didn't know this was going to be so long. Do I need to read all these?
All final plats shall be substantially similar in design and layout, and the inclusion
of amenities to this preliminary plan as determined by town staff. Number two, the applicant shall add the required Excel easements to the final plat. Number three, the applicant shall continue to work with Douglas County on street names and addresses, which will be finalized at the time of any final plats for the property. Number four, the applicant shall meet required setbacks, stagger, and zoning as stated within the Parker land development ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Barrington, second by Councilmember Rivera. This will be a voice vote. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
No, and I'm voting no, because I don't find it compatible with the properties to the north. There's no adequate buffer there. You did a great job on the east side, but not the north.
Okay, Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5 to 1, with Cheryl Pogue voting no. Item number B, Stro Ranch filing number 14, Lot 3, Excel Gas Regulator Station, used by special review. And Stacy, do you have an applicant here with a presentation?
I do.
Tonight? Fantastic. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:52. We will, again, hear from staff, ask questions of staff, hear from the applicant, ask questions of applicant, open it for public comments, and then bring it back for final comments, debate, close it, and then vote on it. So Stacy, we'll let you go again.
All right. Thank you again, mayor and council. So again, this is the Stro Ranch filing 14, Lot 3, Excel Gas Regulator Station, used by special review. So the subject site is located at the southwest corner of Parker Road and J. Morgan Boulevard. The applicant, Public Service Company of Colorado, which is also known as Excel Energy, is proposing to upgrade an existing natural gas regulator station on the property. With the increase in demand created by new development, Excel Energy has been upgrading its facilities within this corridor, including the regulator facility that is the subject of tonight's request. The proposed upgrades will be located within the existing easement, but the applicant will be enlarging the station and inquiring the parcel and fee. The proposed regulator station will continue to be an unstaffed station with visits to the site for planned maintenance only. The area immediately surrounding the site is existing residential, which is the Creekside Meadows Town Homes to the north and Robinson Ranch to the east, and then vacant commercial area to the west and south. The subject property is located in the community center character area located at the intersection of Parker Road and Stro Road. The surrounding area consists of a major commercial corridor to the south and west, with higher-density residential to the north, and then lower-density residential to the east and further west. This area is intended to provide commercial uses and higher-density residential uses that serve the community. As the southwest area of the Town of Parker, as well as the surrounding areas within unincorporated Douglas County and Castle Pines have continued to develop and grow, a need to increase capacity for utility services has also increased. The proposed use by special review is to allow for an upgraded gas regulator station for Excel Energy on the property. The applicant will be creating a tract that they can purchase from the current property owner for this proposed station. The proposed tract will include the regulator station and fencing that will screen it from view for a total of approximately 1,600 square feet. Uses by special review for public utilities are required to determine the proposed impacts of the public utility on the town and the adjacent properties. There are 13 criteria used to evaluate a use by special review for a public utility. These criteria ensure that the proposal is consistent with the surrounding area, it's consistent with the master plan, the effect of the public utility on future development of the area, if adequate open space and visual corridors are preserved, and if the utility creates a stable environment. After evaluating the information provided by the applicant, for the use by special review, staff has determined the proposal meets the 13 approval criteria set forth in the land development ordinance. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, the project is consistent with the 13 criteria for use by special review for a public utility, all notice requirements have been satisfied, and the Planning Commission heard this request at a public hearing on November 18th, 2021, and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Stro Ranch filing number 14, Lot 3, used by special review to allow a gas regulator station, subject to the two conditions contained within the staff report. The applicant has a presentation for you and will be available to answer questions, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Excellent. We'll let you take a breath there, Stacy, before we start with questions. Start to my left, Councilmember Dyak.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions right now, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
None, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Hendricks?
Mr. Chris, any feedback or concerns from Stro Ranch HOA, since it's adjacent?
We sent them referrals through our process. We did not get a response, and I have not heard from them.
That was my first question as well. The second question is the type of fencing.
So with this application, there are three applications required to actually construct this. The first one is the use by special review to actually allow for the regulator station on the property. The second one is the applicant kind of created it. They're creating the lot that they will purchase from the current property owner, so it's the 1,600-square-foot tract that they will purchase in fee. And the third one is a site plan, and the site plan will be looking at everything that's above ground, including the fence. Right now, there is a site plan submitted. We are looking at that fence. Right now, they're proposing a vinyl fence.
Solid?
Solid vinyl fence, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Rivera?
I'll wait for the applicant presentation, please.
Excellent. All right, if there's no other questions for Stacy, then we will go ahead and go to the applicant. And is that Cheryl Dietrich? Awesome. From Piesco? Great. If you'll come down, state your name and address for the record, and I think Chris has your presentation up, too.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Dietrich with Excel Energy. My address is 1123 West 3rd Avenue in Denver. Thank you for this opportunity to present our project this evening, and we have a presentation, pretty much an outline of what the project's going to be, and then we also have our team members that we have here with us and also online to answer any questions that might arise. So we look for that opportunity, and thank you for your time this evening. The outline of the presentation, as we see here, is the purpose and need, an overview of the project, photo sims that have been taken that Stacy actually also had shared, also the construction and restoration process, natural gas safety, which is at the top of our priorities on all of our projects, public outreach and what will be involved with that, the approval criteria, and then we'll open it up to questions after the presentation. Next slide, please. The purpose and need is what is driving this project. As stated, it is an upgrade of an existing natural gas reg station at that site, and that's why we chose where we were for the infrastructure coming into that reg station that is existing. The purpose of the project is to upgrade it and also to accommodate the new residential and commercial development in the area. The project is needed to meet the increased demand as a result of the recent population growth and development in the Town of Parker, also to enhance the system's resiliency to the extreme weather events that are upcoming. Also, going on to the overview of the components of what will be at the site, we will have a regulator station and also natural gas pressure-regulated equipment. We'll have a solar-powered electronic pressure recorder, inlet and outlet fire valves, and above-crown piping, all within this 40-by-40-foot fee-owned property. What will be built around that is a 40-by-30-foot fence. It will be Trex security fence enclosing the reg station equipment, and there will be a 16-foot vehicle access gate and a three-foot-wide pedestrian gate. Approximately 3,430 feet of new 6-inch natural gas distribution line will be installed in Parker Road and then go to the east at Stro Road, hooking into the existing system. So it is the line and the additional capacity that's needed there. There's also a 26-foot-wide private access drive connecting the proposed reg station to the existing J. Morgan Boulevard for our access, and we've worked with the fire and engineering as far as design and what will be required of that road. The construction duration we are planning will be January through June of 2022. There'll be probably two to three months of construction, and then that includes the restoration through June. And then we have the overview map that Stacy's already shown. It is at the southwest corner of Parker Road and J. Morgan Boulevard, and then the distribution line will extend down from J. Morgan just south of that on Parker Road to Stro Road in the east, tying into the existing system. Okay, and then here's a overview site plan of the equipment that I have already described, and then also showing the entrance into the station there. Okay, and then going to the simulation, Stacy already shared these. There are three that we chose here to look at from the different pointers and the development around it. The first one is the view to the northeast, before and after. The second slide is the simulation view to the east, and then the third simulation is a view to the south, and this shows that entry drive that will be used there. Okay, moving on to the next slide. What we want to do is talk about the construction and restoration process. We will be using two primary construction methods to install the natural gas pipeline. Most of the natural gas pipeline will be installed by boring, and that will be... We're working with CDOT with their requirements, and we'll be permitting it through that in Parker Road, and then there will be some upper trenching also. The temporary use areas that we'll be using will store equipment, conduct minor construction activities, and stockpile materials required for construction. While we do work to reduce the level of inconvenience during construction, every construction project does involve some inconvenience. We do work to keep the residents and businesses informed during that time and throughout the project to give them advanced information so they can plan. All accesses to the businesses will be open during our full construction process. Some of the things that we can expect during construction will be temporary lane and sidewalk closures, traffic control measures, including flaggers. We will also communicate regarding any temporary change for access, and we have that routed out and pre-planned with our team. The elevated levels of noise typical of construction work, when we're working near that, will be minimized as much as we can working through that. Also, what we'll be doing is coordinating with the communications plan, and that is the next part that we want to talk about, actually, natural gas safety. Actually, that's our priority on all of our projects, and then we will talk about the communication outreach. Natural gas safety is at the foundation of all that we do at Excel Energy. What we do to be proactive in the implementation of our safety measures is, first, we use third-party inspectors throughout the project to oversee construction. We x-ray all the welds of the new lines. We pressure test the line before placing it in service. We install corrosion prevention systems to protect the facility. We conduct periodic post-construction inspections. We also conduct annual hazard patrol and leak survey. The gas line is remotely monitored 24/7, so we're able to identify if there's any leaks or anything, you know, pressure drops. We repair any hazardous leaks immediately. We will communicate regularly with the emergency responders during construction. This project... This project has been designed to continue to meet and exceed federal and state standards and safety requirements for installing, maintaining and operating our natural gas infrastructure. Okay, and going on to public outreach, which is really important to us too at Excel, just building relationships during our construction projects. Our team is committed to provide timely information and responses to individual stakeholders during that time. And what we did is we have established the hotline, the email and the website and all of that contact information is provided here on the slide. What we will do is we will send out postcards before and after the project. And then also something that was actually suggested before the planning commission is to post a site on-site so that if any of the people in the community are outside of that notification area, they'll be able to find out how to contact us with any questions they might have. So that is a priority for us in that communication. And then just to close, we just wanted to reiterate this project does comply with the Town of Parker's land development ordinance, the master plan and other regulations. The project does comply with the 13 criteria for approval for public utilities. Okay, so that's pretty much closes my presentation and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Excellent, thank you ma'am. We'll start with questions to my left, Councilmember Dyak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
You might get a clean sweep out of this. Councilmember Hendricks?
Do you know how long construction might take?
Yeah, we're anticipating two to three months with, you know, depending on weather because we're starting in January. And then we should end the July, let's see, June 30th is pretty much what we had talked. So we're planning a six month with restoration.
Okay. And not that you can predict the future, but do you foresee any future upgrades with this?
No, we are planning, I mean, this is for future, and I don't know what the build out was that for that, but that's why they're installing that other line, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. What's your setback going to be from Highway 83 and then again from JP Morgan?
Stacy, do you have that information? We do design that. Now with reg stations, as opposed to like oil and gas, usually is within the property lines, so that is set back and then we build the fence around that. And I don't know, Stephanie, do you have any setbacks? I don't believe we have that with our reg stations because they're fenced in and often too, they're even open where people can come around. So they are built safely. Even the gas pipelines, they just can't go under a, you know, residential, something where people would live in. But we put them under, you know, drives, under basketball courts, under, we build it safely to the depth that meets those requirements.
So, you know, do you view a vinyl fence as providing adequate security from any automobile accident coming off of 83?
Yes, so we do have that, the trees there, which I'm sure you're familiar with that, that does protect any kind of, you know, that would stop it probably. And then also with the fencing, yeah. And then if there's any bollards that we need to, I, our design team is on the line, but we design it for safety with that. So really the trees would probably stop anything like that coming from 83.
Are you anticipating any extra landscape buffering on the other sides?
No, we're not. Yeah, it'll be all fenced in and what we find with landscaping, a lot of times is it's hard to keep that up and plus those will be probably a parking lot right there. We have a potential buyer of that property right now that we're working with. So there will be, you know, like a front, it looks like they've designed like parking spaces above and the area that the reg station will be right behind that.
Yeah, and then my final question is, I think I saw on your simulation that you're going to be using a brown vinyl, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a Trex.
All right, thank you.
It'll be Trex, yeah.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions if I could. Criteria number three, the effect of the public utility upon the immediate area. My concern is the improvements that Stro Ranch Development has made, those burms and those trees that you referenced earlier. Maybe not originally installed for safety, but definitely a nice asset to our community. Those are going to remain untouched?
Yeah, we do, there are three, three trees that we'll be removing. One of them is the big one. There will be one large one, but the others are two, like saplings, they're small trees coming off of J Morgan.
So that, well, that, we'll get back to that question. But is this parcel or this reg station wholly on pivotal Parker commercial property? It is not on the metros?
Yeah, so it's on pivotal, pivotal Parker, pivotal, I actually have them written down here because I'm working with them personally. And then the other entity that we're working with the access off of J Morgan is Stro Business Ranch Circle. And they are putting that through all the land owner, all the property owners and commercial owners for their approvals and will have that about right after the time that the replats approved in site plan.
So that would go, I think, to the next one for me is whether existing proposed streets are adequate to carry anticipated traffic, item eight in our criteria. So my question is if you're working with pivotal currently, and currently pivotal is not if or, but when they decide to develop, why are we creating more access onto J Morgan when we can answer that internally? Maybe Stacy has the answer to this.
Yeah, yes. So the reason they have to provide an access off of J Morgan is for fire life safety. So because the property is not developed at this time, they have to provide an access that a fire truck could access the property if need be.
Okay.
In the future, it is anticipated that when this property develops, that access will be revegetated and go away.
Yay, see, we just lost another question. Good job.
Yeah, and we've worked closely with the fire department and the town with that requirement.
Okay. And then lastly, obviously, is the crash and/or a potential crash. I mean, we know that speeds on 83 there are posted at 55. All of us in Parker know it's not 55 there. You know, the concern is there that we're relying on trees and we do have a state highway with plenty of heavy vehicles. I wonder if there could be some more look into whether or not we need more safety there than just the existing trees. I ask that under criteria 10 and 12. Could you tell me a little bit about emergency gas response and how are they staged throughout the community? If there is an accident, how quickly do they respond to a gas leak?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and tap into our resources that we have online. Ian, if we have some parties online that are our design, engineering design team, I'd like them to address the concern about a crash, the impact. And then also with the emergency response, I probably would just ask for our engineer, our in-house engineer and they can respond.
And I say that with a caveat, understanding that there is something there that exists right now. There is a current use that could be hit yesterday by all means, but obviously as we have a chance to improve, is there other improvements we should be looking at?
I mean, this really is, the improvement that we've done there is for design for safety. That's number one for us. So what's interesting too is that you're asking this, it is not fenced at this time and that reg station has been there, I believe, since the 70s and we haven't had any issues at all with that. And then with the Trex fence, and a lot of times we'll even do bollards, but I'd like to see if we can have one of our team members in the design team address that. Ian? Yeah, that would be Chris Shrine. Do you see Chris? Chris Miller? Okay, so I'll let one of the Ian raise their hand to address that or Michelle? I'm not sure how that works though.
Okay, we're seeing Chris.
I can assure you, we've looked at that, so yeah.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, and good evening. Thank you for taking the time to talk with us. We do have bollards on that design that was presented earlier, so that is added as a safety measure for our reg station design.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, you satisfied the question.
And then the second one is the emergency response time. Can one of our engine, in-house engineers, or Chris, I guess if you can address that, that'd be great.
I would have to defer that to an in-house Excel engineer.
Okay.
I don't think that, excuse me real quick, I'm sorry, I don't think that that is pertinent to my decision tonight. I just was curious for the, maybe for a redundant question.
We actually have an emergency response plan that we have for all of our projects.
Perfect.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
So we just, we just have Madeline Smith, is that who you're looking for?
Who is it?
Madeline Smith?
Yes, Madeline is our, yeah.
There you go. If you can answer that question on the response times?
Sure, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Sounds good. I am Madeline Smith, I'm the gas area engineer for Southeast Metro for Distribution Gas Systems. As far as emergency response, we have a team of gas emergency responders on-site 24/7 at Excel Energy and we have them responding from a multitude of different locations across the Denver metro region and across our service territory in Colorado. Close to here, we have our Valencia Station, which is pretty close in Aurora. And while I can't speak to, you know, average response times for the specific location, we do have, you know, pretty good record of getting to sites pretty safely and quickly and being able to mediate those problems, you know, fairly quickly. We also have a gas distribution area engineer on-call 24/7 as well. And we respond to, you know, calls like this whenever we need to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, sometimes the questions are known, but I like to put it on the record and let the citizens know that this is being thought out. Thank you, Ms. Dietrich, I appreciate your time.
That is a priority for us, so I appreciate that question and we like to highlight that too.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. And we will now go on to public comments. If anyone in the room wishes to make a public comment on this project? Seeing none, or Chris, if we can check and see if anybody on Zoom wishes to make a public comment?
If there's anyone in Zoom that would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay, so with that, we will close this public hearing at 8:17. Council, I'll bring it back to you for final comments or any debate. I'll start to my left, Councilman Dyak?
You know, I have no questions or comments. It certainly looks like the town and the applicant worked through some issues as always and I have no issues with voting on this at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Even if the demand had not increased, infrastructure ages and needs to be updated anyway, I think that this meets the 13 approval criteria and I don't have a problem on voting on it either.
Great. Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah, just agreeing with both councilmembers' comments on that about the 13 criteria and the increased demand for the population growth. But more importantly, when companies want to do something in Parker, effective communication to the residents is key. The fact that there was a hotline, an email, a website and a sign on-site really helps our residents know what's going on in Parker. So I want to thank you for that effective communication, Excel Energy, to our residents and the outreach that you've conducted to notify them of this project. And thank you for your presentation, ma'am.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I echo what my fellow councilmembers say, thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
I could add some additional information if you would like.
Sure.
As far as emergency response. So I've been on many of these cuts on these lines over time. And generally, my personal experience has been, obviously the fire department will be there in five to eight minutes, just depending upon where they're located. And then when the call goes out to public service, depending upon where you all are, we've experienced response times of 20 minutes to over an hour. And I don't know if that's still valid or not, but that has been the history. So just as an FYI.
Excellent, excellent. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I again appreciate the testimony, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you for answering the questions. This is a use by special review. More so, it is a use by special review for utilities and that is even more strict and stringent. We have nine usual criteria today, we have 13 in front of us and I have found that you've met those 13 and I appreciate your time today.
Excellent. Council, any further comments? If not, we'll close the debate and I will entertain a motion on Stro Ranch filing number 14, lot three, Excel gas regulator station.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve based upon the staff findings below with the conditions contained in the staff report.
Second?
Motion was made by Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Hefta. This will be a voice. Rivera?
Hi.
Pogue?
Hi.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes 6-0. All right, item number three, as we switch presenters here to Julia Duncan, is the Chime Ranch annexation. Council, you have in this one, we will treat this as one public hearing, but you will have two, I'm sorry, one resolution, two ordinances and an annexation agreement to approve or vote on as a part of this. So with that, and we'll follow the same thing, we'll hear the staff report, ask questions. Julia, do you have somebody from the applicant?
The applicant's team is here and does have a presentation.
Great, so we will hear from the applicant, ask any questions, we'll go to public comment, bring it back for a debate and initially, or eventually vote on that. So with that, I will open up the public hearing at 8:21 on the Chime Ranch annexation.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, thank you for having me here this evening. Before you is the Chime Ranch annexation and planned development zoning. Next slide. The subject site is located on the north side of Main Street at Willow Park Drive. The applicant proposes to annex 7.5 acres of undeveloped land along East Main Street into the Town of Parker. The subject land will be consolidated with an adjoining 35.41 acre parcel known as Chime Ranch that's already in the town. The property is proposed to be zoned to Chime Ranch PD Plan Development, which will allow for the construction of a maximum 150 single-family homes and associated parks and open space on the combined 42.91 acre site. The proposal will have a maximum of 3.5 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan Medium Density Residential Character Area. The subject properties are located within the Medium Density Residential Character Area and this consists of an overall gross density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The request is consistent with the goals and strategies of the master plan, including Strategy 1H, which encourages land uses that create a sense of community among those who work, live and play within appropriate neighborhoods. The large parcel known as Chime Ranch is developed with an existing single-family home, barn, stable and small accessory buildings. It is currently zoned A Agricultural District pursuant to the Land Development Ordinance. The seven and a half acre parcel located in Douglas County is currently zoned Rural Residential. Consistent with the Town of Parker Municipal Code, the applicant has submitted a rezoning application that's running concurrently with the annexation petition. The two parcels with a total area of 42.9 acres are proposed to be rezoned from the Agricultural and Rural Residential to Chime Ranch PD. The annexation and zoning fulfill the Town of Parker goal of actively pursuing annexations to allow for continuity of services within the Parker 2035 Master Plan's planning area. The annexed seven and a half acre property is within the town's urban growth area. The proposal will have a maximum density of three and a half dwelling units per acre consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Next slide. The proposal would allow a maximum of 150 single-family lots, a minimum of 8.582 acres of open space and 3.5 acres of park space. A PD requires a development plan and development guide regulating minimum lot size, bulk, uses, densities and lot coverage. Next slide. Density building heights, lot widths and required setbacks are consistent with existing adjacent single-family residential developments, as well as the street zoning proposed in the Land Development Ordinance. The Medium Density Residential area consists of an overall gross density of three and a half dwelling units per acre. And this chart just compares the existing single-family subdivisions to the east, west and south of the proposed Chime Ranch development. Next slide. This is a graphic representation, it's a potential alignment. It's not before the council this evening, but it's a potential alignment of lots, roads, the open space and the parks. This will come before the council at a future date with a sketch preliminary and final plat. Next slide. The development plan shows the area to be zoned PD and minimum park and open space dedications. Lot layout, street orientation and alignment and final park and open space locations and acreage will be determined through the plating process. will be determined through the plating process. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a rezoning. These criteria ensure that a need exists, the proposal is consistent with the master plan, adequate circulation exists, and will not be detrimental to the town. After evaluating the zoning information, staff has determined the proposal meets the nine approval criteria set forth in the Land Development Ordinance. Next slide. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, and utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. All notice requirements have been satisfied. The applicant also hosted a virtual community meeting on September 2nd to address community concerns and answer questions. The Planning Commission heard the zoning request on November 4th and recommended unanimous approval. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the town council approve the zoning request and Chime Ranch annexation to Chime Ranch Plan Development. This concludes staff report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, counsel. We will ask questions of Julia, starting to my right. Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions at this time.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. What is the distance of your buffering from the rural residential acreage around the property?
It ranges from 40 to 70 feet on the north property line.
On the north only?
Yes.
All of it on the north? At what level? What, where does it break?
It, well, it's a buffer that ranges from 40 to 70, and it, it varies at different points. So I can direct you to the development plan, which is the map, which shows that buffer. It'll also be determined at the final dedication through the sketch and preliminary plating process.
As I was looking at the map, I see that 40 feet on the area to be annexed and 70 feet elsewhere. Is that correct?
I'm not sure if I quite understand the question.
On the parcel to be annexed into the town, I'm seeing the buffer against the rural residential lots is down to 40 feet. Is that correct?
I'd have to pull it up. Give me one second. The minimum buffer on the north is 40 feet. I would have to look at the, the map to see. But the average along the northern property in the annexed portion is 40 feet.
So I'm asking for the area that's about to be annexed?
Right. That's, that would be 40 feet.
40 feet, okay.
Surely anything else?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Councilman Rivera?
Thank you very much. Could you pull up the chart again so we can show the differences? Thank you very much. I just, I will, I point out to counsel, and I just appreciate here that, as we can see, as the development happened and aged, we have gotten stricter, for lack of a better word. And they have come in with something that matches our stricter LDO. And, and I just wanted to point that out, that 40 to 70 feet versus 50 and zero. And again, open space 10% combined to 20% density for, for 3.86 to now 3.5. Thank you very much for providing this chart.
Josh, any questions?
No, sir.
In there. Councilman Dyak?
No questions. I mean, you know, to me, just, I'm taking it all in. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Great. All right. With that, we will get the applicant up here. And you have a presentation. If you would please introduce yourself, your name and address for the record, and I could give you 30 minutes again, but you know.
Hi. My name is Paul Shukas. I'm with PCS Group. My address is 200 Calamath Street in Denver. So first, before I get started, thanks very much for having us. You know, circumstances had it. I presented in front of Planning Commission, but wasn't able to do it in person. I really appreciate your guys' flexibility with doing this online. I actually wasn't able to do it because I tested positive. And I was vaccinated and the whole nine yards. And if you all wouldn't have had the capability and technology for me to be able to present, I think it would have really done the project to service, so I appreciate that very much.
Well, good. We're glad you're here and healthy today.
Thank you.
So that's, that's good, too.
So with that, you can go to the second slide. So our design team is here. Like I said, I'm the planning portion of PCS Group. We are representing the landscape architectural and planning portion. JR Engineering is here. They have approximately, or approximately 40 years of experience with civil engineering. They've done a lot of work in Parker, Colorado as well. And Century Communities, the applicant, who's the developer and builder, is also here. I'll just hang tight for a second.
Sure. So how's Calamath Street these days?
Oh, it's so good. Thanks for asking.
Is the, the arts bouncing back down there, or are they?
Yes. Yeah, that, which is great. The Santa Fe Corridor is bouncing back, so it's, it's been great.
Excellent.
How's the drive time these days?
You know, it's hit or miss, just depending on when, when you decide to get in the car.
What's your favorite color?
All right, slides up. Let's go.
All right. So Century Communities. Hopefully, I don't have to make a too, too big of an introduction. They're, they were established in '02. They became publicly traded in 2014. They have a large presence in Colorado. They build single-family homes, multifamily, such as condos, apartments, and townhomes. Next slide, please. Okay, so usually, I would put forth a location map, but I thought this was more meaningful. So this entire extent was Chime Ranch at one point in time, back in the 1800s approximately. It was actually called Roly Ranch. You know, it became Chime Ranch when one of the Chime daughters married, or one of the Roly daughters married Harvey Chime. They had a son named Frank. It continued the business. And as you can see, that ranch, which was a cattle operation, began to now shape Parker as to what it is today. The red is what we're talking about now. Next slide, please. This is just to acknowledge that staff's done a great job in helping liaison us to the process. I also want to thank them for their guidance. We had a great neighborhood meeting. We invited quite a few different HOAs, and we extended our boundary so that we could get and solicit good input to the plan that we're going to be putting forth to you today. Next slide, please. So I'm here to respectfully request you to help me annex 7.5 acres of ground from Douglas County to the Town of Parker, and then rezone the remaining 35 acres for a combined total of 42 to PD. Next slide, please. So this is the annexation boundary map. The colorful black line and all of the colors in between that is what the Town of Parker is today. The red line is the anticipated annexation boundary per the town's annexation tree map, annexation map. Next slide. This is a blow-up of that map, and this is Chime Ranch. So the portion of it that's to the south there is already annexed into the town. The 7.5 acres is potentially being annexed to the town and was expected and anticipated by the town. Next slide, please. This is to show that we're compatible with the land use map. We are proposing a density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre per our zoning document, which is what the town has outlined here. Next slide, please. So our PD, not that graphically exciting, however, it is the backbone, which I'm sure we'll have some clarity and questions on, that will shape the site plan to what it is today. Next slide, please. So with this map that is very vague in graphic, it does spell out the density, which is 3.5 or 150 dwelling units max. It says that there's 5,500 minimum square foot lots that can go in this property. They can only be single-family uses. It begins to spell out that there's a minimum of eight-and-a-half acres of open space and three-and-a-half acres of park, and it does speak to the buffers. So on the west side, there's a 40-foot buffer. On the east side, there's a 50- and 35-foot buffer. On the north side, there's a 40-foot and 70-foot buffer. And on the south side, along Main Street, there'll be a minimum of a 35-foot buffer. These are all minimums, and they're just the outline of what the zoning document will provide. Next slide, please. So to be fully transparent, it's very difficult to get neighborhood feedback if you show them a zoning document. So we put forth a land plan and a conceptual land plan that has helped shape from that zoning document. So this begins to now show some of those buffers, how the lots are being laid out. Within those buffers, we could have trail system that would be over a mile of trails in that open space. You have a centralized park that's three-and-a-half acres. You can see that just because, once again, we said that there'd be a buffer along Main Street of 35 feet, doesn't mean it's just a minimum. It can vary, which you see here before you. So next slide, please. Because this is an infill property, we want to make sure that we're trying to be sensitive to all parties around us. As you can see, to the west, Parker Vista is compatible in lot size, as Julia had pointed out, and in density, same with to the east, which is Sunset Ridge. We're all in that three-and-a-half dwelling units per acre, some a little more, some a little less. I can say, as Commissioner Riviera pointed out, that we do have more open space and park space as a ratio and as a percentage than both of those, those neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So this is just really a quick traffic map. Traffic always comes up. This is not part of the zoning criteria per se. But I just wanted to get across that we are trying to be sensitive to our neighbors. However, make road connections, that is something that the Town of Parker really stresses. And our furthest lot in our community is still closer to Main Street by using our internal roads than doing cut-through traffic to existing neighborhoods. So what I'm trying to get across is, is that while I can't guarantee that folks won't cut through other neighborhoods, it's a very, it's a lot less likely, because if they were to cut through the, to the west through Parker Vista, they'd have to travel an extra 400 feet and make it a couple of extra turns. And same if they were to cut through to the east, they'd have to travel 350 feet extra and make an extra turn. So next slide, please. With that, I don't think I'm going to go over the approval criteria unless you all have questions. But we believe that we've met it. You can go to the last slide, please. Two more? One, two. There you go. This is just a sketch and a shot of what we believe the community could look like, looking from our entrance to the north, over that central park and beyond. And we respectfully request your approval tonight of the annexation or rezon. So thanks.
Thanks, sir. Questions for the applicant? Councilmember Hendricks?
Any feedback you can share from the neighboring neighborhoods with, with your processor?
Yes. Traffic was the biggest one. And making those road connections to both the east and west. And that's more or less why I wanted to show you how we were doing that, even though it's not really part of the zoning document, how we're trying to move forward with that to alleviate some of those concerns.
And what's going to happen to the rainbow cows?
They're going to be preserved and put in the park.
All right.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I do have some concerns. And that is, in the previously annexed portion of the parcel, the Chime property, the buffer between the larger properties, which was an ER on that one, and then RR on the ones we're looking at now with the current annexation, you had a 70-foot buffer. And now with the newly annexed property, you're going from 40 to 35.
We will be a minimum of 40 feet on the very northern property boundary. That would make us approximately 300 feet to the nearest backyard, which is a football field away.
I'm talking to the property line.
40 feet is a minimum buffer on that northern property line.
And what about the?
And we're buffering single-family from single-family.
But that was rural residential.
It is, but it's also annex, we're trying to annex it into the Town of Parker to make it become incorporated in a higher use.
I do feel there's going to be a negative impact to the rural residential property owners without a larger buffer.
Visually speaking? Because we are not putting any cut-through traffic through their community.
That's not the point. The point is buffering from the single-family to the rural residential.
I see.
Councilman Rivera, questions?
Thank you very much. I noticed a buffer on the east and the west. Can you talk a little bit about, about that, please?
We just felt that, one, it was important to create some breathing room and a landscape tract, and potentially even make it pedestrian-oriented. We're all trying to get more exercise, be more health-conscious, and we felt like this could actually serve dual purposes in doing so.
So the, as you're, as far as your knowledge, the Parker Vista and the neighborhood to the, to the west, their, their, their lot line goes, their lots go straight up to their?
They do. They're, they're directly abutting the Chime Ranch property boundaries.
And that was your right also, correct?
Excuse me?
That was your right also, correct?
It was.
Thank you.
Councilman Dyak?
Thank you very much. No, again, I just go back to staff's presentation regarding the buffering. I mean, as councilmember, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rivera. He got a promotion. Thank you for, for that. Commissioner Rivera stated. Intern Rivera. You know, as, as we progressed and as we've developed, we've gone from a zero setback to something more, more meaningful and purposeful to our, to our unincorporated neighbors. There's probably also a nuance to, to design as well as to what to do. And I don't think I have that ability to, to tell somebody where 40-foot and 70-foot truly makes sense. I mean, from the eye and from our standards and from what we've done in the past, I think it's all acceptable. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions. Thank you.
Great. All right. Well, we'll conclude this piece of it. So just was one last question, and I appreciate the history lesson during that. I really do. So is this the end of Chime Ranch? Is there, is there nothing?
There may be more parcels to the east, but as far as I know, and the, the applicant Century Communities has a much better relationship with the seller.
Okay.
And they could, they could fill you in.
Okay. Just at a little bit like the end of
I hear you.
Of a long, long, couple hundred year era, so. All right. With that, we will open it up for public comment. So anyone in the room wishing to make public comment, come on down to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and I will give you three minutes on the clock.
Thank you, sir. My name's Joanna Floyd. My address is 7786 Lark Drive. And we are the northern property line. We own three lots at that seven-and-a-half acre parcel. And it is right in our backyard, and we've lived there for 40 years. We have three two-and-a-half acre sites. And we're very concerned about this coming, and we would very much appreciate the consideration of a larger buffer than 40 feet, if at all possible. That's, that's it.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment in the room? Chris, can we check and see if we have anybody on Zoom?
If you'd like to make public comment in Zoom, please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay, thank you. So I'll give the applicant an, an opportunity. Usually, we, when a, when public comment comes up, I'll give the applicant an opportunity, if they wish, to, to make a comment or to address the, the concern of a larger buffer.
So I'd like to make a, so Paul Shukas, PCS Group, I, I'd like to make a comment first, and then I'd like to have the applicant come up as well. and then I'd like to have the applicant come up as well. So this is a zoning document, and we haven't gotten to the level yet, or we're starting to get to the level of studying that buffer that you saw. And right now, on that plan view document, you saw a horizontal buffer, meaning you're measuring from me to you on a horizontal plane. What the PD does not consider, and what will very, very likely happen, is there will also be a vertical buffer, meaning there will be a change in grade, and our site will also most likely be lower than that of the property boundary we're speaking of. Once again, I'm not prepared to show you any visual documents for that, but I do believe that that is also a way to visually mitigate some of our adjacent neighbors' concerns.
Come on up, and if you'll state your name and address to the record.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear this. My name is Cindy Myers. I'm with Sentry Communities. I'm at 8390 East Crescent Parkway, Greenwood Village or Inglewood, whichever you want to pick, Colorado 80111. We heard some of our neighbors' concerns at the planning commission, also during our neighborhood meeting. We have committed to meet with both our neighbors to the east and to the north. We have drawn up sections showing how the grade will vary through there, and we're also, you know, certainly talking with them about different things, such as landscaping and other things, to mitigate some of their concerns and the visual buffer from our homes to their homes, and understanding what is going on there. We want to be good neighbors, and we're trying very hard to do that.
Great. Thank you. Will you, will you make sure, if you haven't met the people that just spoke, will you trade information before the end of the meeting?
I do have their information. We did talk after the planning commission meeting as well.
Okay.
And I talked to them before the meeting here and told them I have some sections and things to show them. We had agreed after the planning commission that we, after the holidays, because it's a little crazy this time of year, meet and go through and talk about some of the ways that we can, you know, meet each other's needs and do that.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Appreciate that. All right. With that, we're going to close the public hearing on this at 8:48. And council, I'm going to bring it back to you for comments, opinions, debate. So I think I start, Todd, with you. So we'll start again with Councilmember Hendricks.
I, looking at this project, I appreciate the improved percentage of open space and parks and the lower density. To me, it meets the criteria outlined with the nine factors for the LDO and the master plan and talking to all the utilities. So for this piece of this process right now, I'm in favor of this.
Councilmember Pogue?
Unfortunately, while most of the project is good, I find, in my own opinion, that we do not meet the criteria because it's not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And you can't just say it's not Parker because it's still part of their surrounding neighborhood.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, in front of us today is a zoning and annexation request, and I do feel that you meet the criteria. I will say, in personal opinion, Ginger Kime and the Kime family obviously is Parker history. We do appreciate you honoring the cow. When we actually purchased property to build the library, I know it sounds silly, but a lot of us grew up with the cow. So, you know, parade of cows, right? Remember, it's a long time ago. But when we purchased the library, we used another piece of Parker history, the beam from the Quanza Hut, to honor Ginger's heritage and the Kime family heritage, and make a horse tie-off in front of the library. Though it's probably never been used, it's still there to honor the history of the ranch. And I'm glad to see that the cow and hopefully the calf will, I didn't know the parade of cows had calves, but, you know, one popped up one day. So I appreciate the partnership that you guys have created with the Kime family, and thank you for presenting in front of us today.
Councilmember Dyak?
Thank you very much. I have a question, Jim. Regarding this buffering discussion I think we've had, is this more of a site plan discussion as opposed to an annexation rezoning discussion?
Well, exactly. And then what you're proving tonight is a zoning document which is going to set a minimum. They could come back with a plan that meets the minimum. They could come back with a plan that exceeds the minimum. So that is a planning document, probably at the platting stage, because this is a single-family detached, so it won't be a site plan. There will be a preliminary, sketch and preliminary plan, another public hearing before you, and then ultimately a final plat, which is approved administratively.
So, I mean, largely, if it's 40 or 70 or 385 feet, that is something ultimately that, once we get to a site plan discussion, will be addressed.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Barrington?
Actually, that just answered a question. So I think that that slide that was, that you pulled up really tells a great story of what the ranch used to look like, and there's just this little piece that's left. I think it makes sense, what you're, what you're trying to do in there. But I also really appreciate you listening to existing neighbors and attempting to, I know you can't make everybody happy all the time, but listening to what they have to say, I appreciate that, and I look forward to moving forward with this.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes. On its face, the criteria meets the nine, it meets the criteria, the nine criteria of the land development ordinance. I'd also like to point out, again, reiterate that it does meet the master plan in chapter six, land use goals and strategies, chapter eight, housing and neighborhood goals, chapter 10, transportation, chapter 11, public services and facilities, chapter 12, natural resources, and chapter 13, open space. I'd just like to point out that this is infill, and within infill, you have adequate sewage, waste disposal access, and that infill land is prime for development because the infrastructure is there to support it. Now, as a gentleman said, I already had, I had COVID as well, so that's why I'm struggling a little bit with my breath. I'm recovering as well. But that infill is there, and so the Kime family, over generations, sold this property. They sold it off, and they sold off the last pieces to the town of Parker. And this is what's happening in Parker. A lot of this ranch land that we have, farmland, is being sold off and then rezoned and annexed as well for what we have today in 2020, as opposed to, I think it was in 1919, when this land was established on your slideshow, sir. So this meets the criteria for the land development ordinance.
Excellent. Council, any other comments? If none, I will entertain a motion on resolution number 21-053.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number 21-053, please.
Second. Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilmember Hendricks, and this will be a voice. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
No.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to one, with Cheryl Pogue voting no. I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 2.278.
I move to approve ordinance number 2.278 on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hendricks, second by Councilmember Barrington. This will be a voice vote again. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
As I said before, I don't find that this is compatible with the surrounding property. Therefore, I vote no.
No. Hendricks?
I vote yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes five-one, with Cheryl Pogue voting no. Ordinance number, oh, sorry, entertain a motion on ordinance number 3.360.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance number 3.360 on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilmember Barrington. This will be a voice. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
No.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five-one, with Cheryl Pogue voting no. The last is, I will entertain a motion on the Kime Ranch annexation agreement.
I move to approve the Kime Ranch annexation agreement.
Motion is made by Councilmember Barrington, second by Councilmember Dyak. Again, a voice vote. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
No.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes five-one, with Cheryl Pogue voting no.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would just remind Councilwoman Pogue that the voice vote is for the vote only and not for comment. That was happening during the debate in the previous section. We could have spoke our piece. I would reserve, I would ask to reserve the voice vote for the vote and the vote only, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll make notes. Thanks. Items number nine on ordinances, ordinance number 3.01.126 on second reading. Mr. Maloney, we get you tonight.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to start just off topic real quick. I got to tell you, tonight is, I think, one of the best public hearing processes that I have seen in the years that I've been here. I mean, Mayor, you're running an excellent meeting. Council, you're applying the criteria. You're making excellent findings during deliberation. I got to say, I'm delighted. You're doing a great job.
Well, we all tried. We practiced, you know.
For what it's worth. You guys are doing a great job.
Thanks, Jim.
So on the item that's before us tonight, on this is, in May of 2020, the town administrator issued an emergency order to allow for temporary patios for the purpose of assisting Parker businesses in response to the COVID pandemic. Then on July 12th of this year, prior to the expiration of this emergency order, the town council approved ordinance number 3.01.125 to extend the period of time until December 31st of this year. Recently, the Collar Department of Revenue extended the expiration date to May 31st, 2022, concerning the use of patios and other outdoor areas for the consumption of alcohol. So the purpose of this ordinance is to further extend the temporary use of patios from December 31, 2021, to May 31, 2022, to be consistent with the Collar Department of Revenue. Any questions, Mayor, Council?
All right. We'll start to my left. Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
No.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Thank you. All right. So with that, we will follow our process and open it up for public hearing. Anyone in the room wishing to make a comment on this ordinance? Anyone online?
If you're on Zoom and want to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are none.
All right. We'll close the public comment, period. And council, I'll bring it back for any comments, starting to my right. Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue? Rivera?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember, these are comments.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Dyak?
You know, I just want to let Jim know that that was probably the best, most succinct, to-the-point presentation I think I've seen here in a while. Thank you very much, Jim.
About time.
You can tell it's almost nine o'clock. Councilmember Barrington?
I think anytime we can assist our businesses, I'm all for it.
Great. Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, absolutely. This is going to help our Parker businesses, allow them to use those outdoor areas for consumption of alcohol, and have more people enjoy our beautiful weather in Parker here. So this was actually something good that came out of the pandemic to enable our businesses to thrive a little bit. One positive thing.
Great. With that, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 3.01.126.
I move to approve ordinance number 3.01.126 on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hendricks, second by Councilmember Barrington. This will be a voice again. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yep.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes six-zero. All right. Our last of the night, which I'm sure is going to be the best part of the night.
Exactly.
And you'll all, you'll all want to give your accolades to Commander Coleman as he comes up. But resolution number 21-050, a resolution to approve the Douglas County Local Mitigation Plan, Comprehensive 2021 Update, volumes one and two. Yes. Commander Coleman.
So, Mayor and Council, I'm here tonight seeking approval and adoption of the updated hazardous mitigation plan. This was done by Douglas County. Just a really quick, brief synopsis on this. Obviously, Douglas County's was, Office of Emergency Management was tasked with this in June of 2020, with developing and updating their new hazardous mitigation plan. The mitigation plan, sorry, I'm actually reverting to these now.
I could tell the struggle was there.
Mitigation planning process includes the development of a risk assessment, capability and vulnerability assessment, and the hazard mitigation actions. This is something that FEMA requires every five years. So with that, Douglas County OEM went out last year. They hired an engineering company to come in. This includes all the municipalities throughout all of Douglas County. They work together by developing, like, just a local planning group from all the different municipalities. This is what we've come up with. As of right now, we are the only municipality in Douglas County that has not already approved it. So that's why I'm here tonight, to get our approval, so we can move on with this. So with that, I'm open. If anybody has any questions or concerns regarding the plan, I'll try my best to answer them.
Excellent. Councilmember Dyak?
I'm right there with Andy. I got, I got the glasses, too. So that's all I got.
Councilmember Barrington?
That's supposed to be reserved for the comment?
You know, it's, it's what it is.
Okay. So, no questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I have contacts. No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
I have glasses, but I have questions. So first of all, I want to say, I've reviewed what I can of this plan, realizing that volume one on the Douglas County website doesn't download for anybody. Volume two looks great. And that is an all-hazards mitigation plan for the county, and it's including some information from each of the municipalities. However, my question for you is, the town of Parker was also looking at a mitigation plan, but I've never seen it come to fruition. Kind of, where are we at on that?
Well, I would probably, there's some, well, there's many different avenues we can take on this. So first, obviously with COVID hitting at this time, it obviously put everybody back. Also, staffing here at the Parker Police Department, who, that's where the Office of Emergency Management is held now, when it comes to staffing, we're looking at restaffing. We took this opportunity over the last couple of years to start building those relationships that we haven't had there for a little bit. We work with Douglas County. We work with Rappel County South Metro Fire, and by doing that, we're broadening our resources and hopefully bringing a lot of that knowledge and experience back to Parker to where we can do that. Now last year, we did develop our new emergency action plan. We have developed a team in the town to help. Our goal right now with Parker is to look at our first 12-hour operational period. By doing that, when we look at incidents, like, we're working with Douglas County on a new wildland fire program. So obviously, fire could be a big deal. We're getting into our winter months. Hopefully, someday, we're going to get a snowstorm, possibly a little bit of snow on Friday. I know in the past, we've dealt with blizzards, and we've been able to work with our neighboring counties to come up with different resources. At this time, we don't have the ability to run shelters. We don't have the ability at, for that size or magnitude. But that's something, as we continue to grow and build, hopefully, that would be a goal of ours. But we've been able to take advantage of both the counties, utilizing, Douglas County was able to go out, get an engineering company, professional company to come in and develop what I think is a great program. We're going to be able to learn from this program and hopefully develop better resources here in the town of Parker, build our team up bigger and stronger, and be prepared for when one of these hazards actually comes to Parker.
Do you anticipate in the future, then, of completing the all-hazards mitigation plan, just the towns?
For a local one?
Yes.
I think it would be way smaller than, obviously, a Douglas County one, the entire one. But yeah, if we can look at something, I know we've lost, we we had a part-time employee that was working both with Parker and Lone Tree. You know, maybe if we can get a little bit more people involved, we can start working towards that. I would hate to put a timeline on something like that. But I definitely see, as we continue to grow and get more involved with emergency management, it's a resource, it's something out there that we definitely need. And if anybody has looked through the plan, it's something that is, it's a guide. And I think if we can, right now, that guide might be at the 10,000-foot level for the whole county. If we can get a staff together and dial that in, I'm all for it, to help out with serving the community here in Parker.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rivera?
I believe our EM expert covered it.
All right. Then we will open this for any public comment. Anyone in the room wishing to make public comment on the local mitigation plan? Or anyone on Zoom?
There is none.
All right. Bring it back to the council for any further comment and a vote. So, starting with Councilmember Dyak?
No questions or comments.
Okay. Councilmember Barrington, any last comments?
No.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes. Just a comment. And I appreciate the fact that you're, from Councilmember Pogue's question about you developing a local team to get more to speed on this. Because you can have a plan in place at the national level, the state level. But your plan is only good as the people are trained to execute it. And so, from what I understand, our police department is well-trained. And so reviewing this plan, understanding this plan, training to this plan, developing somebody to be the point leads for execution of such a plan, it sounds like that you have that in place, Commander Coleman, going forward. Am I right?
I like to think so, for the first operational period. I'm a steering committee member for the Arapale County Incident Management Team. My sergeant, Craig Up, he belongs to the Douglas County Incident Management Team. So we're getting that knowledge and experience, definitely.
Yeah. And that's really what it's all about, being able to look at the plan. And when the situation happens, being able to execute it in accordance with what is written and being flexible on the execution of that plan as well. So thank you for taking the time to come brief us here this evening.
Thank you.
Comments from the side? Councilmember Hendricks? Councilmember Pogue?
No further questions.
Councilmember Barrington? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution Number 21-050.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-050.
I second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Rivera. This will be a voice vote. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six-zero. Would know their business before the Parker Town Council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thanks.
Let's adjourn. So moved.
Okay. I'm taking Josh's, not Todd's. Who's going to second on this side?
Second.
All right. Hefta. All in favor?
Aye.
Pogue? We'll adjourn at 9:09.